I'm sorry. You have one like comment. Well, agenda item and then.
Anything to download?
Who?
Anything do you want there?
I don't think so.
Okay. Moving on administrative reports.
We have to approve the agenda we have to.
I thought you got it through, sorry.
No, no, I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Sam, seconded by Diane to approve the agenda discussions. All those in favor say aye. Raise your right hand, sorry. Alright, moving on administrative reports, Mike.
Well, first of all, we want to again welcome and congratulate our state champion softball team that is here. And we hope to have it with us, but but we do not have it yet, but we will be having much signage to commemorate that for all time. On the field and as well as uh on the roads entering the district and the schools. Still working really hard getting ready for the next school year. We were working on uh closing out the twenty-four or twenty-three or no twenty-four, twenty-five school year and working on completing the Form nine that, you know, took us so long before and we'll have that done by the end of the month and then we'll have some really accurate financial picture. So we can move forward off of uh. Excited about a couple of things we'll talk about later, but we're able to hire another speech language pathologist, which will save the district over a hundred thousand dollars as well as provide better services to the to the students. I'm also happy to report that as of today Morocco Elementary is fully staffed for next year and we're working on staffing out the rest of the schools too. I'll have a much more uh comprehensive report on that at the next meeting and we'll have some more hires for you on June thirtieth. The other thing that I want to say is we'll have recommendations for both secretarial pay raises and bus driver pay at the next board meeting. Thank you, thank you. Anything happen?
Um, not a whole lot. Some things down. It's just been busy, the summer is always busy, especially this time of school year. Um, it's crazy that school starts in like three weeks and so just going through the senior schedules, um, none of that stuff is live yet, even though registration has opened up. We wait till about another week or two uh hours school for some reason, like semester one, you might have Alver one first semester, but then semester two, you might have it. I'm sorry, first period, but then you might have it third period, second semester, it doesn't sync it correctly, so we have to kind of go through and make sure all those um flow correctly for the students before we put that part live. Um, otherwise that's kind of been about it, the building's starting to look great, the custodians have been working hard all summer on that. Um, and yeah, just trying to get teachers in rearranging things around as well with some teachers, they have the classes staffed by teacher, not really wanting to do anything online if we don't have to. Um, yeah, so I go ahead and introduce them though.
Sure.
I guess since they're all staring at it. Right, our history making softball team, I always kind of, that was just a crazy ride, I know especially for you guys as much as it was like for the adults as well with it. I kind of cracked up because that day, um, it was Friday the thirteenth, but it was like raining all morning, it rained all day and it's just like, oh man, this isn't gonna happen, like we're gonna postpone it and stuff and then, I don't know, what, three hours before, like we had to drive or you guys might have been driving already in the rain, it just stopped for us to play or you guys to play us to cheer you guys on. Um, which was like, I have three kids, they're all in competitive sports, I get like very competitive and stuff, I'm like, okay, it's not my kids, it won't be that bad. This was way worse, this was way worse, um, didn't sit down once and so it was just exciting and just so happy for all you guys and then like bright and memory that you're gonna have forever with it. Uh, and then afterwards it started raining and they canceled the game afterwards, so it's like everything just stopped just for you guys to play and make history, so that was great to see. Um, and so I know not every, like not the entire team's here, but I'll still kind of recognize everyone um on there and I'm mad at, I do have the not necklace, but the medal that's hanging in my office. But anyways, I did get one, it was exciting, oh, and the plaque's just as big as cats, just so everyone knows. Didn't have to go through. So uh for player number one, right, wait, Kaylee Axley, if you want to just like step forward, there we go, um, number two is Riley Higgins. Number four is Dakota Dyer. Number five is June Busboom. Number six was Kalen Dyer. And then seven was Addison Colbreth. Eight was Kelly Williams. Nine Paige Colbreth. Twelve Tatum Cahill. Fourteen Ryland Clemens. Eighteen Sydney Rainford. Twenty-one Aubrey Eller.
Hey guys. I gotta take another picture.
Okay, so there's Dakota Dyer and Kalen Dyer. Um, thirty was Macy Busboom and then ninety-five three Anderson. The only one who can say that she threw a pie in the principal's face and then um our student managers, uh Anthony Donnelly, our A D and Sophia Diaz and our coaches Kat Messersmith and Garrett Hope.
Can I get one more picture?
Yep.
The other one showed up?
I'm gonna move.
Aw, thank you.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute.
Thank you.
There we go, alright. Who are we looking at?
In the picture.
We're all gonna go to the middle.
Leave it to June.
Did he show me that there?
Okay, our cheeks are hurting.
Shirt.
Especially when. Thanks lady.
There you go, sick, I'll come breathe now.
Where do we go, where do we go, where's staying downstairs? Hey, you guys are good to go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, congratulations.
Good luck.
Yep.
Alright, sorry. So, brain is still fixed on the girls there. Anything else on administrative reports, anybody else here? Board member reports, anybody got any? John, you got any?
No.
Do.
Go ahead, Sam.
Okay, so update on superintendent search, we are going to hope to launch everything as far as application goes the week of August eighteenth. Um, we are going back and forth with Steve Horton, I'm trying to nail down a time, but it is looking like Wednesday, August fourth, the board will convene in an executive session with him.
Fourth or the sixth, because I wrote down the sixth earlier.
Sorry, it's the week of the fourth, but it's Wednesday, the sixth.
Okay.
I'm trying to nail down a time, as soon as I know a time, I will reach out to you so we can get that scheduled. Um, but we will be meeting with him to go over all of, like, we do a portfolio that gets posted, um, application questions, things like that. Um, we will meet with him to get that all prepped and ready to again kick off the week of August eighteenth. Um, we are also working with Dr. Mike, um, when he was up at Gary, he did a um project as far as helping Gary get a whole bunch of, he collaborated with a bunch of different superintendent contracts so that we could revamp ours and we're gonna try to get ahead of the game so that we, when we do find that one candidate, we're ready to rock and roll. Um, that's. Yep, that's what I got as far as superintendent search goes, I do have quick questions as far as has every, has there been notifications gone out about back to school night yet for the elementary schools and the junior, senior high? Do we know? No, so we don't know dates or anything like that, so that's, I'm gonna add that.
The junior high, I received a message for the.
Barton Rush?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that'll be for the incoming seventh graders, yeah.
So that has went out, I have seen that.
Okay, and then so back to school night, because there's some parents asking about that, um, I'm gonna go ahead and jump the gun here as far as last year. Usually two days before the school year starts is when my phone starts buzzing because I have irate parents about bus routes, so if you would mind questioning, figuring all of that out.
On, I have a comment on bus routes.
Okay, and then um Catherine already said registration progress, we've kicked that off online, right? Um, one last thing is that last year and Mr. Zachary is aware of it, Mr. Zachary is not able to um use his like all call stuff for the sixth graders. So if the sixth graders would like to participate in like football, cross country, those kind of things, he has to directly email or contact our elementary school principals. And then they have to send that out, I just don't want any kiddos to miss out on an opportunity to play if that's what they would like to do. And I know last year there was a little bit of some communication issues that we ran into, so trying to get ahead of the game with that. Um, that's all I've got.
So on the bus routes, uh discussing and then it was something that we had been dealing with multiple times during the last school year. Um, for us, because of our, our policy is written, it says within a reasonable distance, what we're discussing and doing is make it very specific. So like what Sam had reminded me and the ladies, because I obviously knew is you have an elementary route, which the bus goes out and does the elementary pickups and goes back to elementary schools and then our high school goes, junior high school goes out and does it. So for me, something, you know, we need to specify because reasonable distance, according to Google from Sam's research is a quarter mile. For me on the elementary routes, it should be like tenths, let's say the maximum two tenths of a mile, so that when some of these long cul-de-sacs, we're not having elementary kids having to walk all the way down to that place on busy roads or whatever. So we as a board, we need to specify.
Yeah, that didn't get fixed.
No question what we want on what the tenths of the mile or whatever it is, so if you can come up with some, I'm thinking two tenths, whatever. And then the bigger kids, the junior and senior, I obviously quarter miles sufficient and whatever, but if we can break that down in our policies, then there's no question about that, parents understand it, our bus, people understand it and we get to address it before school starts, so. That answer, what we were talking about, okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, that last year there were two, one of them got fixed, but the other one has not and I don't.
It was Glendale State's in Lake Village.
I can't remember, I had written down which route number it was, but so you've got that, okay.
But also Sam had reminded me that we had readjusted the school calendar time wise, so there's more time in the morning, fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
So that they should be able, that was the big question is getting the buses back in time to get back out to do the next route, so, alright. Anything else on board reports?
Oh, I guess I can do that.
Yes.
Now, so we were given a thank you to the twenty twenty-five graduating class scholarship donors, we are grateful to our local organizations, community members and family who generously contributed. As well to the universities and colleges that awarded scholarships to support our students' academic futures. Together, our students were awarded three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars, your investment in our graduates is helping build brighter tomorrows. So there's a very extensive list, so we are gonna ask that this be an official part of the minutes with everyone listed on there, because that, that's incredible. That's, that's very nice.
Yes, thank you to all those.
Yes, thank you to all the donors who helped make that possible for the students.
Anything else for board reports? Moving on to nine three, A, the North Newton, where I've already taken care of that state championship team, um, I just want to follow up, Mike, we have ordered that sign, do you know when we're gonna get that sign in for the field?
I do know the timeline, I know this, that's the mock-up, so it shouldn't take long to make.
And then, nothing in non-action items. Alright, moving on to consent agenda, public comment. Uh, first thing is our executive session board minutes uh for June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. We also have our regular board minutes of June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. We have a list of donations, section D is our ETA purchase request, section E is our field trip request, F is our financial claims and reports and G is the consent vote. You want to do these individually or would you like to do them all at once?
Uh, we can do it individually.
There you go, so on the minutes for the executive session, is there approval for the executive session minutes?
Motion to approve, I'll second.
Motion from Sam, seconded by Melissa, discussions, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, we have our regular board minutes from June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, is there a motion to approve for that?
Motion to approve, second, whoever, you can give it to.
Sam and then John, seconded discussions. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Donations, what was on it? The donations were Roseacre Farms, FFA donation, donation towards the general needs of the program, check for twenty-five hundred dollars. And I can't read that, is that ISA?
IHSA.
IH SAA Athletics, Medal Attitude Award, Cindy Rainford, check for a thousand dollars. IH SAA, a North Newton School Four Champion Educator Award, Audrey Coens Long classroom, check for two hundred and fifty, donation total three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Is there a motion to approve the donation?
Got that approved.
Motion from Diane, seconded by Sam.
Second.
Discussions, I want to thank all the donors for that. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand or for the donations, thank you. Uh, ETA purchase request, that is for.
Pop-up tackling dummies.
Yeah, football BSN Sports, Fisher Utility for a hundred eighty dollars and ninety-nine cents, uh snap stick sixty-eight dollars, pop-up tackle dummy, three of them eight hundred, or I'm sorry, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars each for two thousand nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars, ninety-seven cents. And tugable strap, two hundred sixty-one, SAH shipping handling, total three thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. So this is for our, I'm assuming our football team and we're paying for this out of our funds, okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Melissa motion to approve, seconded by Diane, discussions. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Field trip quest. I have a field truck request for, write that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Oh, this is retroactive, Coach Gibson requests a awards banquet at North or Newland County Fairgrounds on July eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Was there anybody to speak on this? No? I'm not voting for this, I'm voting no, so I'm not gonna make a motion or second this. But there's no motion, there are dies for lack of motions and the request is denied.
But it already happened, so.
Doesn't matter. Principal.
But I'll motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Sam, seconded by Diane to approve. And then uh field request for North Newton for the Coach Gibson to have athletic banquet at the fairgrounds. Those, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand.
I'm gonna have to say, because it's.
Four, two, one.
Yeah.
The motion is denied.
I'm going to comment on that, I'm going to say that yes, it's already happened, it's retroactive, there is nothing that can be done about it right now. However, nothing personal, it is policy, in our athletic handbook, any and all banquets need to take place at the school. It's accountability and responsibility, we've got rules, we gotta follow them.
Any other discussion on that? Alright. Financial claims report, you had a chance to go through those?
I didn't, I had a question earlier and I got it answered.
Well, what was it, A D?
It was from Lewis and Caps. So just to verify, so the ladies got me an answer, so I'm good.
Uh, on our financials, just to get Mike, we're, and Patty, we're, July at the end of the month is when we're hoping to have all that stuff more accounted for.
Yes, we'll be up to date.
And you guys have gotten our books called up, as you and I were discussing, we're what, a couple of months behind from?
Yeah, we're probably, Patty, about two months behind right now, you think, or getting things reconciled?
For March.
We're in March, so, but since March, we've been marching. Yeah.
Marching forward.
Perfect. Alright, is there a motion to approve our financial claims that submitted?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion from Sam, seconded by Diane to approve the claims, discussions. Add it, uh, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carried. Uh, consent vote.
That, that was just if you voted for it all at once.
Yep.
Oh, okay, I don't like that, okay, we're good on that then, moving on to our personnel report. Get the news, the ones printed off. Alright, so we have some hires. Uh, Cassie Cox, uh salary for eighty thousand effective July seventeenth, Robin, I can't say that name, Sour, the Sour Speech Language Pathologist is the new hire, right? For seventy-five thousand. Corey Hillis will be bumped up to Director of Maintenance at fifty-seven thousand this effective July seventeenth. Lauren Miller is the Director of Guidance Council, that's a new hire.
Yes.
At fifty-nine thousand. Uh, Gracie Stevens, uh seventh grade P E forty-five thousand, first year, first contract, contracted teacher school, okay. Um. Board staff personnel, we have Nina Morrison, paraprofessional. Effective August sixth, thirty-day probation, John Ewing, paraprofessional, study hall. Thirty-day probation, Cassandra Stein, Steinbeck. Title one, aide Lincoln Elementary, thirty-day probation, Andrew Sterling, library technology aide, Morocco Elementary, thirty-day. Allison Johnson, tier one para Morocco, or Morocco, thirty-day. Sherry Wilson, para Morocco, August sixth, thirty-day, Lisa Ilers, August sixth, thirty-day, paraprofessional elementary Morocco. Transfers and promotions, you got Paul, I'm gonna butcher this one, Puffall.
Pam Pufall.
Pam Pufall, sorry. Remediation, remediation aide, Morocco Elementary, title one, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, Jimmy Holmes. Elementary P E gym, oh, this is he's moving from elementary P E to junior high gym teacher. Mini degree, Lake Village, sixth grade, moving to the elementary P E. Extracurricular personnel, Sandra.
Edgen.
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 Edgen. Special educator department chair. ETA pay five seventy-four, Kelly Wendelberg, North Newton Junior, Senior Web Special, ETA pay eight hundred dollars. Now he's actor. Cross-country, ETA pay of one thousand, seven hundred and forty-six, Barb Lasko, North Newton Junior High Cheer, ETA pay of one thousand, two hundred and fifteen, Jamie.
Xitis.
Xitis.
Right, is that Xitis?
Seventh grade volleyball, ETA pay of one thousand, seven hundred and forty-six and Erica. Loggins.
Loggins.
Loggins, eighth grade volleyball, ETA pay one, seven, four, six, and then resignations and retirements, we have Michelle Christiansen, Morocco. Uh, secretary of August, effective August third. That is our personnel report. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Or motion to approve?
Move to approve, I'll second.
Motion by Diane. Seconded by Melissa. Uh, discussions, on this ETA pay for all the ones in extracurricular personnel, is that for last year's pay that we're paying them for all this stuff or is that?
Right now, that's what's in the CBA.
What we owe them for last.
No, 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 this is for next year.
This is for our new schools.
Yeah, but until there's a new contract with those, those change, that's.
So is it, but. And I don't, the ETA is a contract, right, it's part of our future contract?
Yes.
Yeah.
Why are we agreeing to a number that we may adjust during the negotiation?
Because they'll start getting paid doing it.
Makes sense, I mean, why would you do that if you're, let's say that again, got increased or got removed?
Because that's what it is right now.
It'd be just like after we settled and they would get a difference.
Yeah.
Or if it was removed, they would just owe us, okay.
They have to approve them now because they're gonna start here soon.
Okay.
So I think that's why.
I just didn't understand because you don't have your contract yet for the new school year and but we're approving something to pay you, which could be more.
So if we do move to increase those, then they would get a difference in that pay later.
So this just says as of this school year until the negotiations is done for the, this new one, yeah, okay, makes sense, thank you. Any other discussions?
I just want to say how proud I am of Sandy Edges for stepping up and doing the special education, education department chair. I've known Sandy since my oldest is, was in kindergarten at Lake Village and I have seen that woman go through a lot. And she has moved mountains for our kids, so I just want to say I am very proud of you.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other discussion? Alright, all, is there any public comment on that, sorry, keep moving ahead, catch me if there is one. Um, all those in favor approving the personnel, excuse me, report as submitted, please raise your right hand. Passed, alright. Out of district student transfer request, uh what we have. Was it one or two coming in?
Two. North Newton Junior.
We have North Newton Junior Senior High, two transfers incoming. Like I said, I don't think since you've been here, we've had any outgoing, um, so, and they're one for seventh grade and one for freshman, perfect. Is there a motion to approve the incoming transfers?
No, don't approve.
Seconded, is that Diane?
Yes.
Motion from Diane to approve the incoming transfers and seconded by John, discussions. All those in favor, raise your hand. Both, motion carries, excellent. Um, out of district student transfer capacity request, submission deadlines. Two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, Mike, you want to claim that one or?
Yes, we have to provide the state of Indiana with the capacity of the district, so in order to take in. Student transfers from other districts. You can't adversely impact your students, so let's say the capacity of the district was fifteen hundred kids. We need to tell them this is our capacity in all of these buildings, so we're not hampering the educational environment by taking in and just trying to hoard money.
And you need us to take action on that or?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
To vote on it.
So is there a motion to approve the out of district student transfer request, submission deadlines, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six?
Move to approve, second.
Motion from Diane to approve. Motion from Diane to approve, seconded by Melissa, discussions. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, we have an early graduation request for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, I think, the principal submitted that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this would be two students.
How did that work? Is that, is normally every year we get a couple that we?
Graduate in September.
Earlier, later?
Um, and once going into the military, so wanting to graduate early, graduate as long as they get all the credits, so like everything.
So these are oncoming seniors.
Yes.
We're preapproving, hopefully they meet whatever criteria the state or the school provides.
Yeah.
And then they can graduate, whether it's going in the military or going to school or just finishing early or trade school. And we'll have these on record so that we can have more motion. Do I need to read the names off for the record?
Uh, no.
So is there a motion to approve the early graduation requests submitted to us from our principal for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year?
Move to approve, second.
Motion from Diane, seconded by Melissa, discussions. Uh, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, motion carries. Um, do I have any public comments? I mean, anything, cause we're at the end, aren't we?
No, you still have the handbooks.
Turns the page.
Meeting will be short. Um, item D, oh, that's a good one. Our Northland Junior, Senior Student Handbook, two thousand twenty-five. Mike, before we go into approving this, I wanted to make sure, I know that Mike, we discussed about this, but has the policy committee, you guys are going through this and had time to vet, whatever we need to do on this handbook, and also the next one, the course description?
Um, this one, there's only minimal changes on it, and yeah.
And course descriptions will be state mandated.
Yep.
I wanna make sure that we all had time to look at. And in this handbook, this covers, um, all of our policies for.
Yeah, for kids, yes.
Perfect. There a motion to approve the handbook?
Make a motion to approve.
Seconded. Motion by Sam, seconded by John, to approve the Northland Junior Senior Student Handbook for two thousand twenty-five. Discussions, I have a question. Do we have an elementary student handbook?
Yes.
Or is this just one for everybody?
The junior, senior high.
Is it different?
Yes.
They're, they're, yeah, they're usually a little more prescriptive in junior, senior high because of the nature of.
Little kids, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, painting, alright. Okay, that is my question.
And so, so you had min- minimal changes, cause I, I, I looked through everything.
Cause like the graduation or retirement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if students want to graduate early, they have to have a seal, and that's also in like the course description book. Um, some of it changed with the, on page like twenty-four, with the like drug screening. Um, like if a student, athlete, like their name gets, like, so they can drive and participate in courts and clubs. But if their name gets like selected as a lottery thing, and they come and they like deny that they're gonna even participate in it, they get put on a three sixty-five.
Okay.
So, there would be then.
So that's in the handbook?
Yeah, that's one of the.
Do we also have like the dress code and stuff in there for our handbook that we, and all of our students and also their parents either sign off or get a copy of that? Before.
So, as part of registration, yes. And then it's on, online as well.
Do we require anybody to sign it, that they received it, or is it just?
It's always signed online, yeah.
It's an online thing. On the drug screening question, do we require our staff to do the same thing that our students do with taking random drug tests?
We do not, unless the, uh, we do test, if there's a bus wreck, actually, we're going through the protocol today. If we would have a bus wreck, breathalyzer, drug test immediately. But, yeah.
I have a question on the three sixty-five day thing. So, say I'm a student, my name gets pulled from the lottery. I come in and I'm like, heck to the no, I'm not taking that, blah, blah, blah. And then the next day I come in and I'm like, yeah, I still wanna go to the dances and stuff, I'll take the test now. Does that, I don't get a redo? Like, it's that one time that you get pulled on the spot?
Correct.
Okay.
Does this handbook have in it the, um, question I know some of us have been asked recently in the public about our attendance policy?
Is it a new policy from the state?
Yeah.
And we'll need to update, as we update our policies.
Yeah.
That will need to be updated.
And that's actually something, um, there was an article, Diane, I don't receive, I haven't gotten the ISBA emails yet, but there's something as far as you forwarded it to me today, that there was a.
Yes.
Article that was released, um, within the past couple of days, that I printed off. Hopefully, I know I printed it off right before I left.
Hmm.
Um, but we also, as school board members, we receive these quarterly from ISBA. It kinda gives us a bunch of stuff that's been going on as far as coming up from state, things that are just going on around in the state, new things, strategic planning, a whole bunch of fun stuff. Um, but Julie Slavens, who was our policy advisor through ISBA, she kind of gave a little bit of a broke down, a breakdown as far as the laws that are effective for July first and what we need to be looking at. And it did say that, um, the Indiana Department of E- Education is to establish a more categorization, framework for excused absences based upon reasons for the absence, and that is supposed to be given to us prior to the school year starting, so then we could then change our policies, which then would trickle down into protocol in our handbooks. So, it is going to be coming, um, but we have not seen anything on our end just yet.
And just kind of piggybacking on that, we are diligently working on getting updated, proposed policy changes in front of the board. We'll start on the thirtieth with first readings. There has to be a first and second reading of policy changes. You can vote the night of the second reading, but approximately two, two and a half years behind on policy updates, so, uh, we're going through what, what we plan on doing is bringing forward the ones that are law changes, because there's not a lot of discussions to those, they just have to change. We're gonna try to get as many of those together, so then we can chunk the ones that the board will wanna discuss around, uh, student discipline and other things that, you know, that there is some discretion at what we do.
So on the, I just wanna be clear for the parents and also for us, but on the um, attendance policy, is that a state statute that came down?
It is.
And, but then there's, you can't go less than the statute, but you can go more, I'm assuming, like normal statutes, but is it? Is that the concern that parents have? Is because it was pretty stringent? Like, after ten absences unexcused, DHS can be called or something, I don't know, it was just, I've, I've been getting a lot.
I think it's five unexcused absences within a ten week period.
I just wanna clarify.
Same with doctor's notes and everything too, so.
Now, they may call the doctors, they're not excused. Your, uh, family member passes away, mom, dad, you're not excused. That's all counts against you.
We need to look into finding out if that's the state forcing us to do that, or if that's something that we could change. Do we have an understanding?
So, I assume it was across for every state.
We'll look into that and hopefully make the change. Obviously, with the handbook, we'll, we can modify as we need to.
Yep, yep.
Man, I was hoping to get all our handbooks done before school started, but man, this summer flew, so. Alright, um, any other discussion on the student handbook for Junior Senior High?
Yep.
All those in favor to approve the handbook for two thousand twenty-five, raise your right hand. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, for the course description, as, uh, Mike said, that's just state stuff, there a motion to approve?
Was there anything you wanted to tell us about the course description book or anything, Catherine?
Not a whole lot. Alexis had put it together, um, not before just when she started, it's some of her new courses that is, which were CTEs, so that were in compliance with their pathways. Um, and then just the new diploma requirements as well.
Okay.
Is what that looks like. That all starts with the freshmen.
The freshman, okay.
And the only reason that, cause we're approving this course description to select what courses their kids can take, but as you stated, and I know as a parent, we're already signing up for classes. The only reason this is coming in so late is because our person that handled this left, is she the one that handled all this stuff?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay, but I'm just voting on stuff after the fact, you know, if this got denied or whatever changed, then what are we gonna do online? Modify or what courses people can or can't take? So, I was just wondering how that all worked, and why it came in three.
A lot of it's, you said, is from the state, right? Dr. Mike, that it just, they're, they're just me.
Yeah, you updated, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
There was any motion on this?
No, I'll move to approve.
Seconded.
Oh, go ahead, John.
Motion from Diane, seconded by John, to approve the Junior Senior Course Description for two thousand twenty-five, discussions. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, dual credit agreements with Purdue University West, anybody wanna break that down?
So that's like our, um, like English class, the U S history and calculus, for, um, our high school students to take those courses, and get the college credit and high school credit for it.
That what you're talking about, scheduling affects that credit?
Yeah, like they have to have so many hours in.
Is that hour, yeah, is it by number of days that they have to have in, or is it by hours? Cause I heard that there's a concept of breakdown of that. For our students, is it based upon the number of days of classes, or the number of hours of classes that they have to fulfill within a semester? You know that?
I know, I don't know what you're referring to.
I think we're thinking about flexibility.
No, well, okay, the reason why, where, where the question stems from is that with, for example, if we were to use the flexibility waiver that the state allows, and condense our school year daywise by adding like ten, fifteen minutes to each day, so that we met the required minutes that we are supposed to for each school year, for instructional time, would that affect our dual credit courses?
Couldn't affect it.
Does that make, does that?
Yeah, it should not, I mean, I'm not gonna definitively say no.
Like, we have ninety days in this semester, ninety days.
Cause if you do it by days, that changes, but if you do it by hours of class.
But as far as the dual credit is concerned, they're more concerned with competency.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, meeting the requirements of the course.
Yeah, cause you have to test, right, to test to get your grade for it.
Anything else on that?
Um, not, I mean, for instance, the IV tech ones will be coming.
Okay.
There a motion to approve the dual credit agreements with Purdue University Northwest?
Motion, motion, I'll second.
Motion from Melissa. Seconded by Sam. Discussions. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, motion carries. Alright. Is there any other, anything on that? Board compensation. So I'm gonna give a breakdown of this, just to edit it down. Of what we're currently paid, and what the state is allowing. That's what I'm saying. Alright. Alright, and then correct me if I'm wrong, anybody. Um, the executive special meetings, um, all those, um, as of July, was it July or January this year that they changed that?
It went under affect July first of this year.
July first, maximum amount for any school board member would be seventy-five dollars per meeting. Um.
The special executive.
That's what I'm, yeah, read off. And then the regular overall pay for effective July first, two thousand twenty, this year twenty-five, is ten percent of your lowest paid, since we move everybody to forty-five, we buy August first, that would be maximum of forty-five hundred dollars. And then your regular, what do they call that, per diem?
Yeah, the per diem for a regular session.
Regular session, the max was approved to a hundred and fifty per member per meeting. Alright.
If they're in attendance.
If they're in attendance.
If they're in attendance, that's a big thing. It's if they're in attendance.
Yeah, like Tiffany and Tyson, they would not get, or any special meetings or any executives, you have to be there. That's why we always sign a.
Yes.
Sign in sheets when we come to our meetings. Um, current, what this board is making is special meetings, executive sessions, and all the fun stuff that we do is sixty-two dollars. Um.
That was last year.
But, well, I'm saying what we're effectively making now. And then our regular pay is what the statute limit was at the time, of two thousand dollars. And currently, nobody's getting anything for per diem on the regular meeting. So that's where that is. I know there's been discussions, we wanted to make sure we got our finances figured out, which I think is in a good place. We wanted to also make sure we took care of the teachers' contract, and we wanted to address other people's pay, which I think we're taking care of. The one thing that's interesting for me, and I'm just gonna say this, when I got on this board in October, I remember the meetings that we had, some behind closed doors and some in the public, that we were told, I was told, that we have to close a school. That we're so financially broke that we can't afford anything, and the only way we're gonna be able to do anything is we're gonna close the school. And I'll be honest, they wanted to close Lake Village. And I sat there the entire time and said, I don't understand how though we as a board can vote for that, when you don't know what our financial situation was. And at the time, the superintendent and the treasurer that we had, um, all the financial questions that we asked as a board, we were never given the answers. Um, it was very painful, very hard for me, somebody coming from the county that knew everything, could get information within minutes from the auditor. We couldn't, I, up until our new superintendent came in and our two new office personnel came in, we were getting no information. We had no understanding of the financials. And I'm very grateful for what we have as the staff and the superintendent, that we've been able to provide the funding and give bonuses and raises, and we're not gonna finish with that, we're gonna try to take care of everybody before the school starts. But look how the difference that is when you get the truth, when you get the actual information. Look what that happens. That's a big plus for our corporation, for our school, and for our community. So, I wanna thank everybody's efforts in that. I really appreciate it. So, I'll leave it at that. Any discussion on board compensation, or does anybody have, we need to pass something by statute. Well, we need to get that address to the covers for our year.
Is there any public comment on this? I don't.
Nobody signed up specifically.
Okay.
Did the meeting, I asked you a question.
Did you sign up?
Yes.
This isn't in the meeting, this is still.
This is still.
Yeah, I can't hear, I didn't hear that part.
Yeah, we're not at the end of the meeting, we're still in the meeting.
Well, I think the one thing that needs to be noted is that it got tabled. Cause it typically takes place in January, and typically there is supposed to be some kind of resolution passed.
Yes.
And I will say that when I first got on here as a board member, there was never a resolution passed. There was never even any discussion about that there were even per diems for anything other than the regular conversation, which is fine, because we have all stated, none of us are doing this for the money. We've been accused of that. At making some crazy exorbitant amount of money, which is not true, even, even with this new stuff that has come in, and and no, our board is not taking insurance, and that was something else we were accused of. None of, none of the board members here are getting insurance, so just making that crystal clear that it got tabled, because also the collective bargaining agreement wasn't done, like you were saying, we wanted to make sure that the staff and everyone was taken care of.
Well, that was the biggest point for all of us. I think when we were going through the collective bargaining and what a nightmare that was of confidentiality and stuff, and we needed to make sure we, we didn't even know what our finances were, and we couldn't make a decision on our pay, let alone anybody else's, so why would we not pay our people first and then figure out what we're doing? So we've done that, that point, I think we need to get this. I know that Tyson has talked to some of us.
Yeah, I was able to touch base with Ty- Tyson is on vacation in Canada, um, pitching his life out right now. Um, but he did, he said whatever we decided to discuss, he would be okay with and respect what we were gonna do. Um, and Mrs. Fox also had the same comment when it goes down to it. Um, so I'll go ahead and make a motion as far as the amounts that I think, and you guys can agree with me, shoot me down, whatever. Um, for our previous amount, it was sixty-two dollars for special and executive and emergency meetings. I would like to make a motion to bump that up to sixty-five. Um, for the regular, like per diem for regular sessions, change that to one hundred. And then for the base rate, increase that from the two thousand to three thousand even. That is my motion. If somebody else has a motion, go for it. That's my motion. If anybody would like to second it?
I will second that. Alright, there's a motion by Sam and seconded by me for discussions. Anybody having discussions? Or me, moving the special meeting, which is what we have the most of, of three dollars, that I think is, uh, fair. Regular meeting, instead of taking the full forty-five hundred, ten percent, splitting the difference in low, being less than three thousand, I think that's fair. The regular meeting at a hundred dollars, that's fair, um.
Well, cause I think too, the one thing that some people, you, people might not see is the work that goes on behind the meetings. You know that because of the conversations or the meetings that you have with us. Like, this is not a board that's just showing up for a meeting and not helping. You do, you do some of the stuff because you've needed that being the situation that you've been thrown in, and we're getting ready to kind of go through another learning curve with another new superintendent. So no one is coming here not doing work behind the scenes.
No, and and the state controls the schools, which is interesting, because they don't control the counties. Um, okay, the county council gets nine thousand something, commissioners get eighteen thousand. I mean, we just voted for our elected officials of sixty eight for the auditor and stuff like that. It's, I found it very interesting when I came to this side of politics that the state controls this. And I think it's somewhere in Marion County that controls the rates of the special and something. There's some board down there that votes on that. So I found that very interesting. I feel it's, we're a little bit below even half minimum or the maximum we could do. I still think that's fair, because we're one of the smallest school corporations. We shouldn't be paying ourselves what the other big schools should be paying, because they have bigger tax rates, they have more money, they have everything else. So I'm fine with that.
I'll go ahead and read some statistics from the ISBA. Um, they surveyed school board members and their superintendents. And there's forty five percent of the state for school boards, they get the a hundred and fifty for the regular per diem permit for each meeting. Um, twenty six percent get a hundred and twelve, thirteen percent get a hundred dollars, ten percent get seventy five, six percent get other, I'm not sure what that would be. Um, ninety three percent take the two thousand dollar stipend. Fifty two percent do receive the per diem for the regular meetings. And then, see, they also get, there's forty eight percent get seventy five for the special meetings, thirty one get sixty two dollars. Um, thirteen percent get fifty dollars. Like, it's.
All over the place.
It's all over the place.
Well, it should be based on your enrolls, your revenue, what you're gonna pay. But I feel comfortable with this is. It'll attract other people, future for school boards, it'll make it so you're better.
I don't wanna like, just to throw this out there, forty seven percent of superintendents have been in their position for three years or less. That's how the turnover is for superintendents throughout the state of Indiana.
Well, I just told you, I was in Chicago yesterday and the Chicago School Corporation just had a big cut again, the third one, they just cut thirteen hundred teachers and couple of months later, they, earlier, they cut fourteen hundred teachers. So it's a pension, some of the various. Uh, any other discussion on this? All those in favor of the board compensation, raise your right hand. Pose motion carries. Alright. Um, what else?
Mr. Mark, can I say something? You said something earlier?
Yes.
I've done a little quick and dirty research on the attendance policy, so every absence counts, whether it's excused or unexcused. But that doesn't make you truant if you're a student. If you have eighteen unexcused, or if you have eighteen excused absences, because you're, and the school decides, we'll decide what's excused and unexcused. So if you're a type one diabetic and you have to go to the doctor once a month throughout the school year, and then you get sick and you have a funeral and some other things, you'll be reported to the state as chronically absent, because you've still missed school and you've still had the learning loss. That's really what they're looking at. But you're not gonna be reported, the kids aren't gonna be reported as a truant to the state, and the parents aren't gonna be hauled in front of a judge if they're excused absences. There's just has to be a reporting of the amount of chronic, and then the other thing that has to happen is when a kid hits chronically absent, the school has to put in place interventions to help the kid to make sure they haven't had learning loss. So it sounds a little worse than it is.
But there's no automatic reporting that we're required to send to DHS if somebody.
No, and and it is, like I said, it's completely the purview, it's completely the purview of the school corporation of what's an excused or an unexcused absence.
So with a doctor's note, would that be excused?
A doctor's note, if if we decide that a doctor's note is excused, or even if we want to give, you know, you have multiple kids at home and the cold's going through, and first kid has it, second kid has it, if you have the third kid, in my, in my estimation, you wouldn't even need a doctor's note, because, well, I know all the dire kids have been sick. So that's a discretionary decision that can be made. But again, those will be excused, still counts against abs- chronic absenteeism. And they define chronic absenteeism, absenteeism of being absent more than ten percent of the time. So day nineteen, if you will, would flag that.
Well, and it's also, if you read the language, it does say that it's only gonna be for the twenty five, twenty six school year right now. So it's not even, like.
Yeah.
It's only gonna last like for a year. Well, they might change it, you never know.
What they're wanting to do too is they're wanting to get, because since COVID, chronic absenteeism has really grown. And what they wanna do is they wanna have a record across the state of how many chronically absent kids are there, and then they can correlate that with student learning and achievement.
Yeah, that's the thing I, so just to clarify for parents and for us and for me, if a parent calls into school and says, Donnie or Suzie is sick, that's just an absent, they don't have to get a doctor's note, right? I mean, I I would trust a parent to make that decision.
That's what I listen to as explained.
Right.
A parent called in, it's explained, I write.
If Johnny calls in on his own and says, I'm not coming to school, then I'm, you're ass.
You know, sixth grade and below is what I got.
Yeah, I mean, just, it's the parent. But it doesn't count as what he said or negative.
You know, my mom passed away, and I was at school for two weeks. And what I'm reading on the state is that is now against them. Like, that is not.
So we get, we get to decide what excused is. What it, the way it counts against them, though, you're correct. It counts against them toward chronic absenteeism. Because a kid who's, you know, sadly, if their parents died and is out of school for a period of time, they're gonna miss that learning. And what the school has to do, like I said, is put together supports to help catch that big kid back up and put a plan together.
So when. Like, but based off of, hey, this is what I'm seeing as doing the attendance, or this is like, who, who is. Like, or who's. Oh, well, um, his parents passed away. Suzie, she went two weeks because, like, she doesn't have a lot of health, like, who's.
Well, the school would, based upon what's considered an excused absence.
And and do that, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, it ultimately, it would be the principal in the building's call if that was an excused absence or not. But I'd say a lot of times it is gonna fall on you and your colleagues that do that. Yeah. Be a great school teacher.
Okay. Any else on that?
So I do have another question, but if I come in with a doctor's note.
Yeah.
Say I'm sick, I come in with five doctor notes, but then you tell me it's not excused. Right?
No, no, like, if you come in with a doctor's note, it's gonna, like, common sense in my, my perspective, okay. Kid went to the doctor, they got excused, it's gonna go down, it's gonna be put in their file, they were an excused absence. But however, it's the total amount of absences that your child has throughout the year. Once you've reached that like ten percent threshold, you're gonna get reported, because the state wants to find out, but but.
But I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say it's not, it's not necessarily, you're going to get reported.
It's like they have statistics on it.
The school's gonna have to report chronic absenteeism.
Yeah.
And they're gonna have to show that for the chronic absent, the chronically absent kids, they're putting supports in place.
Right.
And that they're reaching out to parents and letting them know, you know, cause i- it is it is very dramatic, and and I wish I had the facts in front of me, the drop off in academic achievement when you hit the ten percent threshold. I mean, it is a very precipitous.
Is there some way that you can put together with your administrators, some type of letter to send home to clarify that?
Absolutely, yeah. And when we get guidance. Well, the other thing too, that we're kind of pumping the brakes on is, we're supposed to be getting guidance from, from IDO.
Yeah, but somebody sending stuff around on Facebook and social media and saying this in the state, and I had literally parents come up to me in the gas station.
ISBA even sent stuff out, you even sent out an email with, yeah, you sent out an email about that. And I've been hearing from a lot of people, not only in this area, but down in Indianapolis, because they're doing the ten the ten days that they're not in the school.
Yeah.
And they're calling on these kids.
Y- yeah, now they're gonna be required to do that now, or they're, they're also gonna say, you know, just, they're gonna be required to reach out to parents and say, hey, wanna let you know your kid's pushing chronic absenteeism, and then you, you've gotta, hopefully, you've got to implement this with a little common sense and a little discretion of, oh, you know, this kid has a chronic illness. And we may have to create some homebound instruction, or we may have to create some tutoring around what this kid's gonna need. But then also, so like, let's say that we say certain things are excused absences, like obviously dentist appointments and a kid has orthodontist appointments, but let's say you're scheduling all your orthodontist appointments during the day, instead of after school. You know, that would be something where, hey, you know, your kid's missing a lot of school and they're excused, but it could negatively impact their learning and their progression.
But how does a parent schedule anything like that if you are a full-time working parent and you have kids that are in school and the dentist office closes at four or five P M?
Well, yeah, again, it's gonna be, it's gonna be classified as an excused absence.
Gonna be a mess, is what it's gonna be.
That's why I wanna, I want, hopefully, we can get ahead of this, put something together, cause to me, it's there's parents that wanna know, like, when you get kids that are junior high in high school, I wanna know if my kids don't show up to school, cause they may have, uh, sidetracked and went off to Johnny or Suzie's house. You know, or there's parents that just are working and don't, you know, there's different levels of.
Well, not, well, not, not to belabor it, but so truancy is a gotcha, if if you will. So truancy is unexcused absences, missing over ten days, and then escalating up. And that, that can get the courts and Department of Child Services and CPS and lots of groups involved. Chronically absent, as we talk about like MTSS, chronically absent is a flag of, hey, are we doing everything and is this kid progressing? Because, Lena, let's say you have a really diligent kid who makes sure they make up their work from when they're gone, and they, you know, they catch up and they study on their own. We just got to show that kids are out of school a lot. We, A, are letting the families know that, you know, your, your child's at risk of learning loss, and B, we're putting things in place. So your kid, I'm gonna make this really superlative to kind of prove the point. They gave us thirty days of school excused. They're not gonna get in trouble for that. They are gonna be flagged as chronically absent, excused or not. Cause chronically meaning a lot, and absent not there, they're not there a lot. So, and then, then they're at risk for learning loss. So we're just flagging that, you know, and so, so let's say it was Catherine, who's not here anymore, that I keep referring to, uh, you know, Catherine would make notes, yes, Sam's been gone for eighteen days. Here were the reasons, and is making As in all her classes. And that would be fine. But then, you know, so and so's been gone. They're really struggling in math due to that, and because of that, we're providing them with extra math help to try to catch them up because of the days they missed. You know, when I was when I was in kindergarten, due to snow and appendicitis, I think I missed a month of school. And, you know, that would be something that we'd red flag. Of course, it was an excused absence, but you'd wanna make sure that we're doing things to catch those kids up.
Another question? He answered it.
Gonna say, so I teach math. So to me, what that would be is if it got flagged and there was something that was said, then I would say, okay, if this, this child has missed two weeks of my class. So as a teacher, I would say, okay, I can come in and I'm gonna meet with them for twenty minutes before school to work on things that they have missed. Or I'm going to meet with them three part in times to work on all of their missing assignments. Going to meet with them before school and giving them a written plan that I'm actually doing, that I am saying to their parents and getting an agreement in place that this is what we're doing and how we're going to get them.
Yeah, cause for me, that answers.
And that, and that's exactly what it is when you're talking about chronic absenteeism.
Right.
And kids that have been gone, be, be it a parent has been sick, has passed away, something has happened to the child, it's what am I going to do to help them get caught back up with what?
Right, that's what I was getting at for the administration. We're a very small school, your classroom sizes are very small. So we have the ability, just like in every other thing we do in Dune County, whether it's, uh, youth sports or Pop Warner or Little League, once we find out people are struggling, we come together and help each other out. So what I, same philosophy of them thinking in the school, why they're trying to collect this data is to make sure that our school teachers, administrators are reaching out to these people, one, making sure the parents know that their kids are missing school or not, and then two, come up with a plan and figure out solutions. Maybe we do something, send something home, but you know, in a smaller environment, we're able to do that much more effectively than you would be in a large school corporation. So, yeah, thank you.
And then there's just, just one more, because it wouldn't be Indiana without it, and Mr. Young, you not take offense to this, or Dion? Unless you go to the state fair. Then you get excused. State fair doesn't count as an absence.
Six days, you get six weeks.
It's fine. Yeah, unless you go to the state fair. Yeah. It, 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 it does, but I think it's, you can have type one diabetes, but.
Yeah.
Yes. I think a comment really.
Well, hold on, I'm gonna get to the public comment.
Yeah, I'm done, that, just had to bitch.
Alright, so, so who do we have in public comment?
Mrs. Holder and Mr. D.
Who wants to come on up first? Come on up. Then you can just add to that, Mr. Danny. Write it down, don't forget it. Name, rank, serial number.
Oh, boy. Just Jen, Miss Jen's what all the kids call me. Um, so I work at Lincoln with Val. Um, I don't know who's in charge of getting information to, and people that work, you know, for North Dune. Um, I had no clue whatsoever of when registration was. No, nobody told me, never got anything, still to this day, never got anything. Um, I just happened to have somebody for PTO reach out to me and say, hey, will you or Val be at the school before the twenty third? Um, what's the twenty third? She's like, sent me the letter, and she said it was shared on Facebook, and that's how she got it. And I said, never got it. And, uh, she's like, well, um, cause I've, I wanna share it on our PTO page, but you know, parents start asking, like, I can't come in on that day, well, you know, can I come in on the twenty second or whatever? And I said, no, I mean, I, I guess I'll be there, you know, I, I just don't know anything about it. Um, so I just wanna know who's in charge of letting us know, um, hey, you have to work these days, you know? I mean, I'd rather know from somebody than see it on my Facebook page, you know? And so I asked her, like, how did you get that letter? Did you get it in your personal email? I mean, I have a student too that goes to North Dune, but I didn't check my personal email. She said that a teacher had shared it, um, and she said it's on the school website. Well, I'm not constantly checking the school website to see if a letter's posted yet, you know? But also at the same time, I shouldn't feel looking like an idiot if, you know, thank God it was my PTO, you know, person that works at the school too, and not just a stranger, you know, that was just knew I worked at the school and asked me, and I'm like, I don't know anything about it. Um, that's the first thing is. And then, um, my, I wanted to know, like, in the past, we would send out letters, like, hey, you know, you're coming back to work this fall. Um, are we sending out letters to everybody in AIDS as well, like, for everybody to come back? Um, because that's another thing, like, and last year included, and I haven't been here for that long, I only started in April twenty two. But I never know when I'm going back. Like, nobody's reached out to me and said, hey, your first day is back as this day. My assumption was the twenty eighth, cause that's kind of when the, you know, the new calendar year starts, that was my assumption. Cause I'm on a two hundred day schedule along with Val. Um, but I don't know. Um, but I don't know, uh, you know, I guess I'm coming back for a day on the twenty-third. Um, and then coming back again to start, like, for the new year, for the twenty-eighth, I wasn't sure. Um, and then a little, one little other thing, which I know Dave's not here, but, um, with us starting a little bit later, I was hoping that maybe for the next school board meeting, it could be announced for some way, shape, or form for, like, right now, when the buses pull up, they release at eight o'clock for the kids to be able to get breakfast, and then we start at eight fifteen. With us starting a little later, I don't want the buses to come pulling up at eight o'clock, releasing these kids, and we're not expecting, like, there could be a time slot of when the kids are supposed to be getting off the bus, you know, is it gonna still be like, maybe eight-ten then, since we start at eight-twenty-five? Something like that, um, and that's all I have.
So Mike, before I have you answer that question, I'm just gonna ask you.
Sure.
Do you take that up your chain of command, which would be your principal, all those other people? Have you asked those specific questions?
I asked her last week. Well, I didn't ask her about the, the bus thing, but I asked her last week.
So the bus thing is a good question.
Yeah, I mean, that's just in general, I mean, that's a, I asked her about the, um, registration.
And I'm sorry, which school do you work in?
Lincoln.
Okay.
I asked about registration, cuz I happen to pop in there to help, um, a teacher, you know, put up some stuff or whatever, and she happened to be there. She had no clue about registration either, uh, you know, so I was kinda like, oh.
Because the information needs to flow, obviously, up, so that you guys can make sure that the administrators and they get.
Well, and the, and the one thing I'll say, especially for, for both of us, is we're kind of feeling our way through what's been done and what we can find, so that's, these are good, cuz what we're building right now is a calendar of when should things happen and.
When they need to roll out.
Yeah, when they need to roll out, so, so I'm glad you gave us the heads up because you assume sometimes and it bites you.
Some kills you sometimes.
Yeah, so I saw some, look, I had a form about registration here that I signed off on for the high school. Uh, and I guess it was never communicated down or among or formalized, so we'll make sure that that is, that is formalized, so in the past, employees have gotten letters.
Right. I, I still have mine, I would get a letter saying like, um, more or less, like, thank you, look forward to see you, you know, in the fall. And I think it's only people that were not on contract, like our aides and stuff like that.
Sure.
Um, I can't say for sure that if I had one from last year, I'm thinking I don't, cuz we have the new superintendent, but like, the times before, yes. Um, you know, I, I guess that was the way to showing like, that we knew for sure we could have a job.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, maybe there's not a need for some aides at Lincoln. And so if you didn't get a letter, then we, we didn't need you, you know what I mean?
It makes complete sense.
Does that make sense?
No, I mean, you're, you're, you're literally going through the entire summer knowing, knowing whether you're coming back for a job or not.
Right.
You should be notified.
Right, I mean, I, I'm, some people would be. I wanna say it was about this time, we would get those letters.
Well, and, and that's, there's why, why I will apologize, cuz the environments I've worked in before, the last thing you wanna get is a letter. Cuz the letter's gonna say you're not coming back, so.
And for us, stuff like when the.
Sure, and we're, and we are getting ready to, we actually were working on that today to get a letter together to send out.
We can't, we can't hear with everybody talking at the same time.
So we are actually, we were working on it today, we're getting a letter to send out about the first teacher day where we're having all employees together to have an employee orientation and back to school kickoff. So you will be getting a letter for that in the very near future. But.
I just.
Yeah, apologies on that, and we're working on the bus drop-off time. One of the things that can help with that is we have a lot of flexibility with the parents now, to be able to work longer hours. So what we, one of the things that we are working on with the principals that I was checking on with them today, just kind of to your point, is looking at what before and after-school care would look like if we can man that, where if kids get dropped off early or parents need to come by and pick up later, so.
You know, at the grade school level, we're the only one that does have after-school care. Um, I think the other ones.
We're trying to get as many of them as we can.
I don't think anybody would fly.
Well, thank, thank you so much too for letting us know.
No problem.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, who's next on the list?
Mr. D.
Adjourn the meeting.
Sorry, I put my tire, I was trying to get straw out of the field and into the barn before.
For rain, you didn't beat the dead.
Before the rain got here, so. Um, part, actually, one of the things on my list was attendance, so I was really glad that that came up tonight. Um, all of it you said is true, right, and yes, there are times when a doctor's note can be counted as not. Because at the high school, you have to turn in that doctor's note within three days.
You have three days, yeah.
And if not, then it will not count.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they had a problem in the past with students bringing a whole slew of doctor notes at the end of the year. Yeah, I was, I was there. Um, so attendance, yes, the problem is that we don't enforce what we already have, and that's where we get into a problem. So like you were using an example of, oh, I have thirteen absences, well, we shouldn't be at that point. At five, we should already be in contact with that parent. And at eight, and I think there's a, a policy we have now where we actually contact probation at a certain time, and we put them on an attendance policy and an attendance contract. And then, if they miss the day, then it's bye-bye. But we've already had students do that and we haven't done anything about it. We've had kids miss twenty, thirty days in a semester. We have kids that are like our tardy policy, we've had kids, I know a kid that had fifty tardies just this past semester. That should not be happening. So really, the root of the problem is not just the policy, it's just enforcing the policy and making sure that it gets done. So, I would highly recommend that you get the administrators all on the same page, because when I went in to talk to them personally, I got different stories of who was responsible for what, they were very unclear of who was doing what. Recommend that you get that all on board before school starts.
And I, I, just, just so you know, I've had a conversation with Catherine about that, and then also, you know, when it comes to a handbook, as we were going through it, if it says we do it, we have to do it. Or we need to take it out if we're not gonna do it.
It's just like your classroom, if you don't, um, keep something from happening and you let it go too far, it's really hard to reel that back in. So I think we're gonna have a lot of resistance, actually, so I'm kinda nervous about that. Um, that was really my only one that I wanted to bring up, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else on the list?
Is it?
Anybody else have any questions out there? You do, come on up.
Not a question, I just, okay, Mindy and I agree. All right, I just think I wanted to clarify, I think what Jen Holder was talking about was two different letters.
Okay.
One that all staff can expect about back to school, okay? And the other one was the, not a riff, but it was a reasonable assurance that you would have a job in the fall. So that those staff members couldn't go and collect unemployment. So at this point, they didn't get those letters, maybe some of them are out there collecting unemployment, but you would know that. Um, so I think she was referring to two different letters, and I wanted to make sure that was clarified, that was all.
Yeah.
Yes.
So for me, I mean, on that, I think we all agree, there needs to be something, obviously, school year's starting out. Um, and we are, we wanna make sure that we're not losing employees, cuz they may not think they're having a job, they go out there to find something else, so. I'm glad you go look at that and we picked out that. Anything else for you guys?
Nope.
Your motion to adjourn?
Love to adjourn. Love to adjourn.
Come on up. You're hatched out from the back seats.
Offer it up. My name's Haley Bell, I teach kindergarten at Lincoln Elementary. Um, I've asked my building principal recently, it was a question that I had last year, kind of up in the air. We do two report cards in kindergarten, we're the only teachers that do two report cards, because we don't pay for the extended power school to do standard-based grading. Is that something we could potentially look into for kindergarten?
Definitely can look into.
Since we are receiving a new curriculum, we have to revamp the report card, and I'd like for all the teachers and building principals, whoever, to get together to make sure we're on the same page, since we all grade the same. Morocco is doing it differently than we were last year. I wasn't a big fan of that because obviously, we're doing the same thing, I'd like the kids to be on the same page. I had one leave and come to Morocco and we're on a totally different page. So, this is something we can look at, I know that we use Power School, they offer it, so I don't have to do a paper report card, convert it, put it into Power School, convert it, it's very, very time-consuming. So, just something I wanted to bring to your attention.
And you already, I think I heard you did tell your.
Haley Bell. Oh, yeah, I told it.
That's a big thing for me is just.
Yes, I emailed and asked if we can get together just to be on the same page, because we grade on like a one to three scale, and three is consistent mastery, meaning you have to have a hundred percent, and Morocco was grading at consistent mastery being an eighty percent, which I'm not fond of, because then if your kids are lower than my kids, I'm not giving them a three, and you gave them a three. And so it wasn't lining up on the same page, so I asked if we could all be on the same page, because I like my kids to do well, but if yours aren't where mine are, but they look like they are, they're actually not. So it was a whole big jumbled mess, but the program itself doesn't have to do with that, it just makes it where we're all on one page together, rather than multiple. I don't send home a Power School report card, so once those get printed, they go in the garbage for me. I have this whole fancy, I have no idea who made it, no idea where it came from, but Google form that I fill out that has all the standards on it, obviously, they've been updated, so we have to get together and fix something on it before the school year. Um, but I have no idea where it came from, that's just what I've used for the past three years, so.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into that.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on first, for.
Yeah.
You go.
Okay.
Just for, I mean, we do have new, we're doing this obviously different than historically this board, but for me, maybe there's a way we can have suggestion box or some type of, because you have to have a fine line between board and the teachers and the administrators, cuz you guys are coming to us either, I don't know, as an employee, or you're coming to us as a parent, or you're coming to us, it's, you're wearing different hats when you're sitting with us. So for us, we have to at least work together in a chain of command. If you have issues with your, whoever your boss is, which is the principal, you need to go through them first, in my opinion, I think most of the board agrees with that. And that way, we wanna make sure that, one, as a community, we're paying these administrators to make sure that you guys are getting what you need. And if it's not, then you need to know about it, it's kind of a catch-22.
Yeah.
So maybe we can work out some way that
Yeah.
you teachers and staff, if you wanna get something that you maybe have approached your principals, nothing against them, maybe they're busy. But, or let the superintendent know, and then we can get it to us or whatever, but.
Well, well, and definitely, if you don't feel like you've gotten satisfaction, or, you know, they may, your, your boss may say, well, just reach right out to the superintendent. Feel free to do that, you know, because we, we definitely, and I can say, speak for this board, when, when I say this, just because we've always done it one way, doesn't mean, A, it's how we wanna do it in the future, or we've been doing it the right way.
Yes.
Well, you guys are the ones in the trenches, and the ones that are doing the work. And if we can get, if we can get information from you to our superintendent, to us, but I don't want it to be where somebody comes up into the public comment and sits there and complains about a principal.
Yeah, don't, don't blindside your bosses.
We do promote that at the school, to make, to make sure you follow the chain of command, just so you know, we do promote that.
All right, last one, come on up.
Say, the kindergarten standard report card came about when Hankins was here with Dr. Rowe. Their vision of that was to eventually make all grades standard-based report cards. With the turnover, it kind of stopped at kindergarten, so I definitely agree and support that they shouldn't be the only ones doing that. It, it seems, you know.
I don't understand this.
They just don't like to convert everything.
Yeah, so.
Would do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do it. It's hectic, but it's a deal.
It was those initiatives that fell to the wayside.
Well, Mike is here, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, so.
Fail through Power School, I think it's an extra, like.
Yeah, it's an add-on.
Took the past couple of years, but.
Okay.
I thought we had it for kindergarten off of us.
Hold on.
With you guys as well.
Come on up if you're gonna speak, I'm not gonna have a yell from the back.
Drop me with you, Mr. Murray.
Please.
We just need to understand from parents, teachers, board, I think you're hearing things that you think we haven't brought to chain of command. I think we have in some cases, we were all at a deficit, including you guys and us on both sides of this. I've many a times, and nobody ever gets back to me or has said things, but everything's changed, the five times I've reached out, five different times. So I think you want transparency, they're gonna come up, they're gonna speak to you, rather, you're here, you're here, you're here, they're just trying to vocalize the things that we're all dealing with that have never been addressed.
That's why.
And you need to know what is happening.
Correct.
Not just chain of command, because chain of command has happened, and once we get it better.
What's, what I'm saying, Emily, is that I wanna figure out a way for you all that if you're not getting it resolved on the chain of command, that there's a way that you don't have to come to this meeting and speak in public, that you can already vet this through an email, it's not a snitch box or whatever, but it's like a suggestion box, so that
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Deon has been trying to get something resolved or whatever, and he's reached out to, now he's gonna send this up to, whether it's just an email or something
Yeah.
that makes it so that we are aware of it, so that we can deal with this before it comes to the public.
The problem is that we haven't had a healthy relationship from our schools to our administration and our administration to our board. And I think in order to heal that, everybody just has to have growing pains and get back to where we trust each other. Um, I think I could say for many of us, that we don't feel trustworthy of anybody at this point, because it changes. So we have to learn that you're hearing us, and you guys wanted to hear, well, we didn't know that, we didn't know that, nobody told us, nobody told us. That gray area of what you're supposed to know and what you're not supposed to know, we have no clarification on. We've been working on it the last three years, if I'm being polite, there's much more than three, three years of lots of gray area, and nobody knows anything, nobody understands it.
What I can, what I can tell you two, that of the feedback I'm also getting from the principals, is they would reach out for guidance or reach out with questions. And then that was going into a black hole.
That's why.
For them, so.
They're gonna keep hearing it for a while.
But, but again, feel free, cuz what, my whole, my whole goal here is to create systems and structures that are hard to break. That, you know, where you'll go to your bosses and if they can't get an answer, they'll come to, or don't have the answer, they'll come to our office, and then, obviously, yeah, your boss isn't responsive, I'm not responsive, come.
Yep.
And we do understand.
Right.
Messy, the number of times I've told them behind closed doors about messy for a while, you know, but we're, we're trying to clean it up.
Right.
My dog goes like this, and I gotta go.
Yes, so that's why I think you guys catch things, that maybe you may not feel like we went through the right chain of command.
No, that's not all I'm questioning, I'm saying, I'm trying to make sure that we have a solution that where you don't feel like you're getting it done, but we can expedite that, so it doesn't have to wait till a meeting, so that the superintendent is aware of it, or the, you know, administrative office.
Unfortunately, it's really late for some of us.
Correct. Well, I feel like we've, I feel like this board has gotten rid of a lot of that rot in the last year, so.
Can you announce your name?
All right, anything else for the board, is there a motion to adjourn?
Iain and John.
Iain and John.
I'll check in. All right, discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion adjourned, thank you all.